...meeting of June 15, 2017 to order roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor police.
Here, I declare a quorum present. Please stand, joint pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is due in flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first I need a motion to approve the city council minutes of June 1, 2017. So move.
Second.
Any questions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do any, well, I do have a couple citizens that wish to be heard this evening. We'll start with Mr. Shumonic. If you could please go to podium, state your name. Steve, you can fill out a card.
My name's Dave Shumonic. I live at 123 Florina Court in Wood Dale. Been there for about 25 years. Wanted to bring to your attention, I understand that the library is expanding. We have, where we're at, we're responsible for a detention area. In the past, unfortunately, the city has not been prudent in being proactive in understanding that any changes to the north affects us in our detention area. We're unable to take any additional water. So seeing as that you are probably the final answer on stormwater and as far as planning in the city, I wanted to bring it to your attention that us in Florina Court and homeowners association are not going to be taking any additional water from the north. I will be going to the board meeting at the library advising them. I will be going to the stormwater committee meeting and if I can speak advising them. We just don't want to run into a situation where it's after the fact. Every person that is a council member today will receive an email with four pictures showing the flow from Forest Glen, from there to the south, across Forest Glen, and what happens when a heavy rain happens. I'll be submitting those to your email accounts. If you're so kind to just say, "Received," that's great. Either way, I'll be sending those tonight so you have an understanding of what we currently deal with and how we don't want additional water in our detention area because we don't think we'd have the volume for that either. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Robert J. Brits.
Thank you.
Give your name and address for the record.
Yes.
Thank you.
Robert Brits with the law firm of Allison Brits in Naperville. I represent Tempco Electric Heater Corporation. People from Tempco are here this evening. I reference Roman numeral item 9A2, approval of petitions submitted by Tempco Electric Heater Corporation for various relief for properties at 6N 504 and 610 North Central Avenue. I'm here to request that the city council defer action on that item this evening for 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Steve Kritsch. 2:15 in.
The first thing I have, and this was brought to my attention, I was going to ATI Physical Therapy, ran across the sky, John Skarupa, who advised me, and he knew I was on the stormwater commission, about raw sewage being dumped into 83 and a ditch. And he lives over by Oak Meadows Drive and 83. He's off of Second Avenue. Twice a week, whoever this guy is, wherever he is, and he talked to the mayor about this. He knows Randy Messina, he talked to him, and this guy, he said it stinks to holy heck. So I took a ride down there today to see what I could see. Of course, all the rain, that stuff washed a lot of it away. But to me, this is a big health problem. We've got a ditch that's running stormwater, and now you've got a guy that decides he's going to empty out his septic tank twice a week into this ditch.
That's illegal.
To me, there's something wrong here.
Well, it's illegal.
And somebody's got to look into it. He advised the health department. They didn't do anything. DuPage County hasn't done anything. So I'm before all you today to ask you if you can do something for this guy. I got his phone number, his address. If you want to stop by, that's fine. But it's on the ditch of 83, and like I said, I walked along there. He's on Second Street, and I'm thinking this might be the guy on the corner. I'm not certain. Okay, so that's that. The other thing is grass cutting. Oakwood between 224 and 236 on Oakwood, it's waist-high. I don't know who owns that lot, but it should be cut. Am I right? It shouldn't be waist-high. And the last thing that I have is what about the community center that's on Irving and Edgebrook Drive? I sort of informed the people at that time, excuse me, about the parking lot that was dug, that they took and dug up grass and extended the parking lot right to the edge of the creek. Well, it's still there, they're still having their meetings, and now they're parking all the way down my street to almost my house when they have their meetings. And I knew this was going to happen. That building is not big enough to accommodate all those guys. So now they break it up, and it's, I guess, a couple, three times during the week. I'm not 100% certain on it, but what's going on with that particular establishment? I haven't heard anything. That's all I have.
One second, Steve, please. Could you repeat the addresses for the grass?
For the first guy, John Skarupa?
No, the grass on...
Oh, it's between 224 and 236. 224, there's a house. 236, there's another house, and this is the lot right in between it.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you. All right, I have no more to be accused of. The mayor's report, again, we want to tell all the residents, whoever receives that electric aggregation, if you want to opt-out, all you have to do is call in. They do have a postcard there. They want it, their personal information. I myself would mail it in. If I ever use one of those, I just call. But I'm not opting out. I'm staying with you. Next. Next, we need a moment of silence for to have your peace and the DFW, very good friend of the city of Wood Dale and residents. Next, under mayor's report, young musicians mentor band donation request. You have that in your packets. Alderman Catalano?
I'll make a motion to donate $500.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. We do have one other item under Prairie Fest, the disposable promotional cups. This is a new item. It's never been done before. Not sure how the council, do one of the Aldermen want to take the lead? Mr. Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Yeah, so we had talked about as a way to help reinforce branding for the city, some promotional cups that are disposable. We looked at something more permanent takeaway, but the cost is too high. So we're looking at disposable cups that are branded, limited number. I don't know if Stacy is here. She would have the, she's not, I don't know what the cost was, but I think we were looking, do you have the cost? We're looking for basically approval from the council to spend this extra money on those cups. What we thought to just minimize the amount of cups is we do it maybe on resident appreciation night, and just keep it to that. Otherwise, we have to scatter it across the four days.
If you went with the expected minimum expense for 5,000 cups, it was 1640 plus the 520, so what is it, 2160? If that's the minimum...
How many cups is that?
4,000, 16-ounce and 1,020-ounce.
Could I ask?
Go ahead, follow up, Alderman Messina.
Could I ask how many residents we normally get on resident appreciation night?
We, I think we passed out about 1,200 of the food vouchers.
There was another tier that was a little lower, quantity-wise?
I don't see that here.
That was the lowest tier?
Was that the lowest?
Okay.
$530.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So would it be appropriate to make a motion now or table?
If you want to make a motion, you can.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to grant $2,200 for the purchase of city customized disposable cups to be dispersed at Prairie Fest.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Where's this coming from? What line item?
Mr. Murmas.
The Prairie Fest budget out of tourism.
How much are is left in that line item? After all the expenses so far?
We don't balance that out until the end because some of the expenses are still in flux, and the revenue is definitely still in flux. So we're trending just as we usually do. It's not over or under budget at this point.
So we don't?
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So we're just going to keep on spending and...
Well, that's why this is before you guys, this evening, this is a new item. It has to be brought before the council to approve, otherwise it does not go.
So...
Go ahead, follow-up, yes.
To the manager, the question was, do we just keep spending on the Prairie Fest without...
Mr. Murmas.
No, we have, we have standard items that are every year expenditures, as the mayor had noted, which is they're all on budget. And in fact, our revenue, our donations are up this year, so we're ahead of schedule in that. The reason this is here tonight is because it's a new expenditure. So if you don't want to spend anymore, you don't have to. Typically, we only have expenditures for items that we've done in the past, hence the giant item tonight.
Alderman Catalano, you had all questions?
Yeah, to the committee, did we reach out to the beer vendor? Sometimes they promotional, they give away the cups with their logo on it.
Well, I believe with their logo, well, this is to put the city's logo on there. Their logo, I believe the cups, they, they give certain amount of cups every year, and I don't know the exact number, and Stacy's not here, I'm sorry. Do you have follow-up, Alderman Catalano? Alderman Messina, go ahead.
So just so you guys know where this came from, we just, it was something kind of last minute, right? So we're a month away. Because I said for next year, maybe we reach out to some of the local businesses to co-brand with us, right? To bring that cost down. Our thought this year was kind of random, right? For the most part, random. We thought, we're spending all this money in branding, we have all these new gateway signs. We thought that this was a cheaper way to help reinforce that. We looked at other options. If you recall, I think you were at that meeting, mayor, we looked at other ways, other things to give out with city branding, and it just was much, much, much more expensive, to the tune of like $4 or $5 per piece. So we just thought this is a cheap way to just reinforce the logo. Done.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
Is this one one vendor we looked at? Or did we look at a couple of others?
Alderman Woods, I don't know. I don't recall.
Yeah, I know for a fact we looked at a couple of vendors.
Who were, you know, the other vendors or...
I do not have the list in names. One of them was promotional specialties. There was A1 promotional, and those were two that I brought to the table, and Stacy had two others.
Stacy called two of them, right?
Three or four at least.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
The lowest one, almost? It'd be nice.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, I could, I could pretty much assure you the lowest one is the one we would recommend, not the highest one. Yeah, yeah.
Good. Follow-up, Alderman Wesley? Alderman Sorrentino, you were next.
Thank you. I like the creative thinking. It's a very positive thing. However, when I hear branding and disposable in the same sentence, it makes me think just how much value is there to this particular branding? Now, if those cups don't make it in the receptacles, guess who looks bad? The city of Wood Dale's creating a virtual nightmare throughout the city. So I would recommend that the monies for the cups, I love the branding idea, and we're definitely doing it, but I, I could not support something that's going to be thrown in the garbage when there's so many other needs here in town that would serve a greater purpose. But it was great thinking.
Fair. All right, thank you. Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
I, I, well, the thing is, I like the idea, but why don't we just do it at Christmas time? We know we've got Wooddale residents in here. Do something, a cup for them for Christmas time, like we did at one time.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I mean, like, I'm definitely not taking credit for this idea. This wasn't my idea, I just happened to make the motion. But to your point, it is disposable, right? Something maybe we don't want to do. We just looked at per piece, what was a cheap way to hit, what's, 5,000 folks with the logo? But to your point, it's disposable, you're right. Could be a problem. We ought to decide for, is it worth the two grand? I totally get it, though.
And the souvenir cup, I think, was one of those that was...
Pricier. We looked at a more permanent souvenir type of cup that was thicker, like plastic, and that just got too expensive. I think it came like, was it two or three bucks a cup? And that was pointless.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you were next, go ahead.
When you're talking branding, are you just talking the logo? Or you're putting a date on this, too? I, I mean...
Right. I would say Wood Dale.
Yeah, but is there another, is there a date below it that says Prairie Fest on it, or is it just? We don't know, we don't have these questions, we don't have no prices here. I mean, $2,100, we're just throwing it out.
The prices are...
No, the prices are here, and a sample of the cups are here. But again, like I said, this is a new item, kind of last minute. If you guys don't feel comfortable, we don't have to do it. We could have a discussion on it, and maybe Christmas time is the time to do so. Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Yeah, so I love the staff's idea of the water bottles, right? That was branding, that was something more permanent. If you guys think you want to save, save this two grand, put that towards something more permanent at Christmas for those that come out for the tree lighting, that's an option. But I guarantee you, it'll be a heck of a lot more than two grand.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah. Large part of the branding issue is the ability to reach beyond our borders, too. So it's one thing to give cups to everybody that comes to the Christmas party, but they already know we're Wood Dale, they already know what's going on. Part of this, at that event and the pick of Prairie Fest, was to reach beyond that to the people that come here from Itasca, Roselle, and other communities. As Alderman Messina said, it was the lower entry point to get something. And as far as Alderman Wesley, if you want the year on there, we can do that. We didn't complete the graphics. It could say Prairie Fest 2017. We could put the city's logo or slogan on there or motto. There's multiple things we could do with that, and the price would be virtually the same for the imprinting. As for the garbage issue, I mean, we do have quite a few garbage receptacles there, and we are pretty proactive. I'm not going to guarantee nothing gets beyond the border of the Prairie Fest perimeter. That would be silly, but all things considered, I think that the majority of that stuff is contained on-site, although some will transfer into the parking lot across the street, I'm sure.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Just one last thing to add context, just give you some context. Yeah, two grand, that sounds high, and you think about the impact it might have. It's an impression, I guess, as they call it. In radio, I think they spent five grand, to give you an idea, in the past, they spent 5,000 to promote it, which you're on the radio waves, you don't know who's listening to it and who's not. That's, to me, that seemed like a lot, right? We thought it was pretty fair considering all other options. That's kind of why we decided on this.
Alderman Sorrentino, you got something else? Go ahead.
Last comment. My only objection would be to the fact that it is a disposable item. Now, if we were to lower the amount of branding items and then perhaps put a value to them by possibly raffling them off, maybe every half hour, every hour, I think it would have a much greater value that wouldn't be a disposable cup. It would be similar to the water containers that we had. So I think we could spend less, have a greater effect, that would stay in the household year-round, that could be used when they're out and about on their business day.
Another comment, go ahead.
Well, I just think there's, I think there was a minimum. Like, I agree, I agree with you. I would rather have bought less, bought 2,000 of the really good ones, but I think there's a minimum. That's why we couldn't do that. But of course, that idea's great. I even, I think we talked about even adding a dollar or 50 cents to the cost of a beer and giving the bigger cup, but...
And I'll make a comment on the, on the minimums. When you do less, it costs you more per cup, so you're almost spending, you know, not quite the same, but anyways, let's take a roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That's a tie.
Over cups?
Guess you picked a tie.
Since everybody's not convinced, I'm going to vote no. And we'll have a discussion on how we want to spend our marketing dollars. One other thing, Public Works had their open house this evening, it was very well attended. Thank you to the staff, Public Works, and we even had the police dog out there. I saw the kids were having a blast with the trucks and the dog. Thank you to the staff. City manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo your comments. Thanks to Public Works staff for putting on a nice event, and thanks to Public Works staff for the continued work in the city and their professionalism. I think they do an excellent job for, for all the residents. So kudos to Matt and his team. Number two, I'd like to remind residents at home that a citywide mosquito spraying will be happening this weekend. And my, my last and final item is to remind everyone at home and the council, there is no council meeting the week of July 4th in honor of the holiday. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, on the consent agenda, we have one item, unless there's an objection, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Throw up a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, an ord, need a motion to approve the item on the agenda, an ordinance granting special use for the operation of daycare at 170 West Irving Park Road, PIN number 03-16-204-002 in the city of Wood Dale. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
I made that motion.
All right, Randy and Sonny. You have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Do we know if the petitioners, did you guys get any information on our facade program?
I believe they... They're nodding yes.
Okay. Just to make sure.
All right, we have a roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Woods.
I have two reports, mayor. One, a resolution in support of the county of DuPage application for the 2017 RTA CMAP Local Technical Assistance Planning Assistance Services delivered by RTA Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Living. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the annexation, a comprehensive plan map amendment, zoning map amendment, final subdivision plat, text amendment, eight variations, and major site plan review to construct a building addition and expand the parking lot at 6 North 504 and 610 North Central Avenue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I make a motion, table?
Table?
There's a motion and a second on the floor already?
Okay, hold on. Tony's second on the original motion. We got a motion that Dave did.
Second to table.
Randy was the second.
What?
You seconded the table.
What? His? Oh, the table, yeah.
You said second, right?
On the table, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we have motion to table oversees the first motion. Roll call.
We're voting on what?
Table.
Okay.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Sizmarski?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Lot of ties tonight.
Mayor police.
Yeah, it's a tie. All right, go back to the first motion. Alderman Woods made the motion, Alderman Catalano second.
Right.
Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Tonight, we're going to vote on our largest employer in Wood Dale. And last week, the vote was 4-4. Our largest employer in Wood Dale wants to expand their business. I think we're sending a message to businesses and residents that we're not business-friendly. I believe staff has made numerous mistakes on this. If we want business to strive in Wood Dale and to promote business, we need to let them expand. Otherwise, if they don't, if they can't expand, they can't improve their business, what else is there? No other choice but for Tempco to leave. And this council is, if it's a no vote tonight, this council is saying, we are not business-friendly. Tempco, please leave, go find another building, and your buildings will stay vacant. Tempco, please leave, go find another building, and your buildings will stay vacant. I'm sorry to say that to the residents in Wood Dale, but if that's the case, what happens to those buildings when they're vacant? The property, property tax becomes half? Or then what happens to the property tax? Who's going to end up paying for that, that extra property tax? Who? Every resident in Wood Dale, every business in Wood Dale. So before you vote on this tonight, think about if you're a no vote on this, that you will be responsible to explain to your citizens in Wood Dale, when their property taxes go up, if Tempco moves out, there's 400 employees in this position, they shop here, they buy gas here, they live here. So what are you saying on a no vote for Tempco for expansion? What are you saying? You're saying, Wood Dale businesses, we don't want you, please move out. Who's going to pay? The residents. And I know there's going to be some comebacks on this, and I'll be up for debate leader.
Alderman Jacob?
Couple of comments. Last week, we sat here for about an hour to debate this. I know for a fact that not every alderman watched the video of the CDC meeting. If people did watch the video, all the homeowners, they were, had a problem with it, they were fine when they walked out of here from that meeting. Before I came here, I was 50-50. I watched that meeting for an hour and 45 minutes. All I saw was positives. And the question then was asked by one of our council members, is there, I hear all the positives, what are the negatives? I heard none from anybody. And again, we're at a tie vote for the largest business in the city of Wood Dale. As far as I know, we don't have businesses knocking down our door to come into Wood Dale. Thank you.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, so just, just on record, I did request that the, the YouTube video of the Millers' testimony regarding the impact or lack of impact and their request be noted, but could you confirm on record that there's no way to play the YouTube video? I have the minute marker. City manager, is that possible?
Mr. Murmice?
I, I don't know. On short notice, I, I don't know if they can do it or not, I don't, I don't know.
I'd like to, I think the impact for, for, and I, I'm going to assume everybody listened to the CDC video, at the two hour and 24 minute mark, you heard the Millers speak. The Millers are the family that are directly impacted by the small variance that Tempco is requesting. You heard the Millers talk about their number one priority being privacy, right? The impact to their privacy. And today, as it stands, if we shoot it down, council, we're not respecting their privacy. I'm going to go through some reasons of why, whatever it might have been, but I really say, at the core of this, and I mentioned it last week, it's about our residents. It's not about the political stuff, it's not about any of that junk, because at the end of the day, we're all here to impact our residents. So being that we can't play the video at the two minute and 24 mark, where really, you heard the most impacted family with this plan talk about how important this would be. You heard the petitioner talking about turning the lights off at night in that parking lot to respect their privacy, building a privacy fence so that their teenage daughters could, could be protected, right? That's part one. This gets shot down, we're not respecting that, that residence privacy, right? The number one thing they talked about, that's one. There was a concern brought up here about fire access concerns. I'd, I'd like to ask the petitioner if he has a copy of, okay, if he has a copy of the letter that was written by the fire inspector. Is it, if I may ask, may he pass?
We've seen it. They fired a district, gave approval.
Okay, ma, okay. So with that letter, rather than, because this is what happened last time, there's, there's more to it, just there was approval, right? There was concerns on access to certain parts of the building, right? And I think some people's concern, very few, was access. So the petitioner went above and beyond to go back to the fire department and got a letter from them saying that they met the criteria. Again, more work that this petitioner had to do. And they have this letter saying that they are not only in compliance, but they meet the criteria that most businesses in town already do. So anybody that has an objection, please, I, I beg you to look at the letter, because that shouldn't be your reason. Next, there's this talk of precedence that we could be setting, right, by, by allowing these, these variations, which the majority are landscaping, and you saw that, right? It was pretty clear. I think Alderman Roy Wesley mentioned this, but I, I tell you guys, or I ask you guys to think of the precedents, precedents we will be sending to longtime existing business owners if we don't go with the CDC's recommendation. Thirty years, 450 people employed. I know the rebuttal. They don't live in Wood Dale. Regardless of whether they live in town, I guarantee you, some of those people on their way in or out of town stopped to buy at least gas or cigarettes, especially if they live in Cook County. You've heard the petitioner talk about how their process is very manual, blue collar, takes lots of hours. Most of their, their employees probably are from the city. You see people that work in the airport come to Wood Dale purposely to buy gas and cigarettes because it's cheaper. So I would even, I would tell you, that's revenue we lose, but just on a general level, okay, 450 people, how about 450 families? Maybe it's not 450 Wood Dale families, but 450 families that will be impacted, because if Tempco is forced to leave, there's some people that work for them that may not be able to make that trip, that may need to find a job. So I implore the council, yes, that may not be 450 Wood Dale families, maybe five Wood Dale families, but it is 450 families that you are impacting, one way or another. Next, if they're forced to leave town, we and our tax, taxpaying residents will be left with a large oddly shaped piece of land. And in my opinion, a missed opportunity to collect additional tax and property tax revenues, as Alderman Roy Wesley mentioned. More importantly, we may be affecting the lives and livelihood of the 450 families I just mentioned that may not be able to make that next move. Although the petitioner's approach may come off to some as combative at times or going after staff, I would ask you, if this was your business and you were in this process for five years, how would you feel? Right? You have an employer of 30 years that wants to spend money and build on their property, and yet we, we kind of are tying their hand, right? They're trying to work with us, right? I implore you, if you're going to make a decision on no, don't make it because of somebody's approach. Don't punish somebody because they may not know how to approach or present their case, right? That to me is just, is just not fair. The alternate recommendation from staff, in our opinion, or my opinion, is unrealistic and official, financially unfeasible for the petitioner. Right? There was something recommended. The building is old as it is, the core structure. To ask these folks to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars more to add on, only to maybe 20 years from now, knock down the existing structure, because at that point, it'll need to be, just doesn't make financial sense. And so you heard their CFO talk about that financial sense. As far as I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, none of us are probably CFOs, right? He knows what's smart for his business, right? And a lot of what you read in that packet is primarily interpretation by the staff. So I ask my colleagues to, again, consider this, what you read in that packet is interpretation by one staff member. You may not like the delivery of what the petitioner did in some cases, but they did a heck, heck of a job in presenting their case and went above and beyond most. So to, to finalize my point, pretty obvious, I'm passionate about this case, for no other reason in that, in my opinion, this was interpreted by staff incorrectly. And in my opinion, a little slanted. And you heard about that when we talked about some of the zoning that was brought up. This time, they're incorrect, and the recommendation from the CDC, in my opinion, is right. We've heard no additional evidence to overturn that committee's recommendation otherwise. So I urge you guys all to take a personal motive, or take any personal motive out of your decision, do what's right for this long-term business or longtime business, and especially your residents who will be punished if we lose some of those tax dollars. Thank you for your time.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Question I have today is, they submitted a letter to ask you for a 30-day extension. Where does that play in here?
Mr. Bond?
I'd rather give them 30 days' extension and see where we go. Let them work with staff and come, try to come up with another deal.
And that, that was addressed with the motion to table the item, to allow for that to occur.
I didn't hear that in the motion.
Well, it's not part of the motion. The motion was just to table the matter from consideration for the season. And that would have given them time to either work with staff or, or continue to, to seek approval, so that failed. So now you're back to the main motion.
Alderman Jacob?
Question for the attorney. I, I keep hearing people being told it sets a precedence. As far as I know, when people come in front, when they go in front of the community development, this, every, every case is a different case. So if we say yes to this, it doesn't mean we have to say yes to every single one, because everyone has its own individual circumstances. Is that not correct?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, that's correct. If you have similar circumstances, though, and you, you give relief in those circumstances, then you should give the same relief to another applicant under similar circumstances. Each, from a precedent standpoint, each application comes before you as a new application, but to the extent that if you have a similarly situated property and they request identical requests, from a consistency standpoint, that, that request should be handled the same way. And it would presumably be applicable to the same standards. For, for example, a variance, a variance has a criteria. Those criteria have to be satisfied.
You have a fellow?
Devia.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes, I mean, so if another, if we said yes and another business came in and they would not be willing to work with the residents, then they're really not on the same page. I mean, you can't, and if we say no to them, that, that is a totally different circumstances. They're not correct.
Well, each, each property is unique, but again, if they come in with different circumstances, you're going to apply the standards to that particular property.
Okay. I'd like to call the question, please. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Could I, on behalf of my client, request that the board reconsider its motion to table?
It's already failed. We had called the question. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
That fails.
Another tie?
Another tie.
Mayor Police?
No. Done. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Sorrentino?
No report this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yeah, I have, I have an ordinance asserting the prevailing rate of the wages for laborers, workmen, mechanics employed by Public Works for the city of Wood Dale.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Tony's second. Any questions? Roll call.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Second, a resolution seeking approval of a contract between the city of Wood Dale and the Engineering Resource Associates for the stream bank stabilization, conceptual design and the amount of not to exceed $42,152. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman, pardon me. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Third, a resolution seeking approval of a contract between the city of Wood Dale and Strata Construction for the 2017 sidewalk replacement program, the not exceeded amount of $50,000. There's no motion.
Second.
Randy was the second. Any questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Fourth, have a resolution seeking approval of a contract between the city of Wood Dale and J.A. Johnson Paving Company for the 2017 pavement patching program and the not to exceed amount of $81,000. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Roll call. Oh, sorry, hold on. Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Hey, I asked this question in this, in the list of bills, but I was just hoping for some more clair, some more clarity. So there was a line item in the list of bills that was for asphalt. Could you explain what the $81,000 will cover?
Mr. York?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The $81,000 is for large pavement patching programs, where we come in and we'll take out a section like the size of the table, and we'll cut it out, and it'll grind down, and a new pavement will be placed in. The question that you had regarding heely asphalt was, that's for small pavement patching, potholing, maybe for a restoration or something like that. This is for large pavement patches.
Thank you. Follow?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Fifth, having an ordinance amending the city of Wood Dale, the one-way street ordinance, chapter 15, article 20, section 15.2002, the city code, to allow for two-way traffic on Front Street. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on this one? You have a hand, Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.[1633.86]